Is this a successful issue or the numbers actually been?
Okay. And if you have, these minutes go on the website within, what, three days, five days?
Seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours after our meeting. If you go on the website and you see something that is simply an medical error, you can call Brendan, she'll fix it, or email Brendan, she'll fix it immediately. So it's not on the website, it's a medical error. Or if, or you could even change something like, there's a repetition, like you had on page four, and then attorney, Alwell, I think those are kinds of things.
Non-substantial.
Right, thank you.
Not to digress, but can somebody let the board who runs the town's website know that the link on the town's website should say the adequate education score instead of medical recommendations?
Do we know it? Selectmen, take that back? Will you take that back, Selectmen?
I remember it.
We'll call. Okay, so we have one question on page three of the minutes. Tam?
Yep.
It said, "Charis and air noted that the test scores show," and we're talking about first graders, "that sixty-eight percent of first graders exceeded the first grade target, ninety percent never exceeded the targets in general." There was-
I think that was all at the first grade level.
Right.
You're looking for clarification on what those numbers might mean?
Yeah.
That would mean that the difference between sixty-eight and ninety percent, which is twenty-two percent, actually met the target and didn't exceed it.
Sixty-eight percent-
Exceeded and ninety percent. All right, then we should remove the "are exceeded." Oh, no, no, I see what you're saying. In fact, they did.
Yeah.
They did.
Ninety percent met or exceeded the target. Sixty-eight percent-
Exceeded it.
So there's another two, twenty-two, that just met it but didn't exceed it. They were just in the range of-
Well, okay, so that explains what, exactly what it says. Very good.
Okay, so, given all the medical changes and changes that you suggested, all in favor of seven minutes?
All right.
Okay. Minutes accepted. Persons scheduled with board communications, any communications?
Policy, if there isn't, there probably should be a policy. We don't share through electronic communication confidential information, not public information. I use myself as an example. The email address I use on a regular basis is my DOJ office email address. By virtue of my employment with the federal government, every single communication that comes into that email address is accessible by my superiors within the Department of Justice. I'm quite confident that they don't review my email, but the banner that pops up on my machine every time I boot it up reminds me that I have no expectation of privacy with respect to any information that's processed through or stored on that machine. I suspect that there are board members here who have computers that are shared by people other than you, or who may have access to those computers. Those concerns I have only relate to the machine on which it's resident. Jim could probably talk to it as well as I. The pitfalls and the potential problems of sending confidential information is important to them.
The board and superintendent will not communicate information about staff or students by name and otherwise be done in public session. We need to just expand that part of our email policy. We do have an email policy that says we won't circulate any information that would be done in public. So I'll-
Computer communications give me the heebie-jeebies. I spend a significant percentage of my time prosecuting people for computer intrusion crimes. And it's not nearly as difficult as most people think it is.
Okay, so I'll bring this to our next meeting.
But now, I had a question. Can you define meeting? To the extent that implies some attorney-client relationship, it isn't. I'm not asking legal advice.
Well, the statute does define meeting. It's the convening of a quorum of a-
Do you define convening?
Yes, I can. This is my definition. This is, the convening is not defined in the statute, but there is a dictionary definition, which is to cause, to assemble.
For the purpose of, or just?
Just to bring together.
Is it possible for three board members to be together in a setting other than at a school board meeting and have it be not considered a board meeting?
Oh, sure. I mean, if it's a party, I mean, the statute specifically exempts chance or social meetings that are not intended for the purpose of discussing or acting unofficial business. So, I mean, and I remember when I first joined the planning board, hearing people saying, oh, well, we, four of us can't be together in the same place. That's not true. You can, you can always be together in the same place. What you can't do is be together in the same place for the purpose of discussing board business.
Finance, negotiations?
Finance, we've been going through, the manifesto says they've been sent to us. Interesting, it's been happening this year and end of the year, there's been improvements that have been happening with facilities. There's nothing, Charis, did you have anything that popped up for you?
Uh-huh.
I had questions that were answered, but there were nothing major.
Right. Negotiations, I just wanted to note that we'll take Lisa's name off and put my name on instead. I don't think that's an actionable item, is that?
No.
The only activity that we've had, we had discussions, Principal Shepard and I had discussions earlier on dealing with the use of surplus monies in the year for technology purposes. And the recommendation that I made was that if, since there is a technology plan and there are dollar amounts in years going out for particular purposes, that if indeed we had surplus funds and we had an item that had been identified and had a dollar value decided, that we might comfortably move that item up into the end of the year and buy it.
And did you?
I don't know the answer to that. But, but the question was, should we, should we buy things that were not on that list? And my answer was no. Now, that was an opposite recommendation. I don't know what we finally did with that.
We thought of your recommendation.
Good.
But we might want to talk about that closer to the end of the year, Jim, when we're looking and reconciling and saying, oh, well, where are we in our plan? And are there some things that teachers are clamoring with, especially those new boards?
Yeah.
If they're working really effectively, maybe we want to get a few more in.
Yeah, look at technology as well as facilities. We tend to look at facilities maintenance issues, but certainly curriculum issues or technology should be added to that.
Yeah, especially because it just accelerates so fast, the prices change. And so that plan gets outdated probably every year.
Well, it certainly has to be-
It does. Even though it's a five-year plan, there are shifts that happen, changing classroom sizes, all kinds of things.
I just follow, and we do have to update that list. There are also items on that list that have no numbers assigned, and either we need to put numbers there or not do.
And just to be clear, that's something that the technology committee does, and you're a member of that committee.
That's correct.
And just to be further more clear, curriculum committee, finance committee, negotiating, facilities, policy, transportation, those are all school board committees. Technology is not a school board committee. We have a committee member, we have a school board member on the technology committee. Is that correct? I just think there's some, we don't really have that clarified, and maybe over the course of the year, we can work on that a little.
So you're suggesting to modify the list and, so how, you adjust what the technology says?
Well, no, we don't necessarily have to modify. We just have to make it clear that this, this, there's two different ways to run a committee, and sometimes you get into trouble if the school board thinks it owns a committee when it doesn't, right? So we just have to be careful about that. We can have some discussion-
We, we can examine the charge of the committee.
Right, let's do that and see if it's clear so that if all five of us are gone someday and you're all gone, the next school board understands.
A school board form, formulated by committee or administration, staff committee or school committee, that we have liaison to.
The facilities report and the principals' report, thank you, getting us updated on the facilities improvements.
We all had that.
Yeah, I think the only thing I can add to that is the railing project-
Yeah.
Is, is, the prints are in the hands of the architect, review came in the other day from Tri-State Iron Works. So they should have that. I don't know what the construction schedule on that is, but sometimes, as soon as Dan Bieseau does the, on the plan, we'll know.
Given the time, in the early days of school-
We'll see it in the fall.
Now, we have a capital improvement plan, and that- Correct. And that gets updated every year?
Yeah, I haven't seen the, well, the oil pipe information that fell out from the town yet, so I assume that's going to be coming around here shortly. Jim's been on that in the past, and last year, John Getz and I served on it.
Probably starting in September. Yeah, I get information.
Yeah. Generally, what we've done with those is just record our expendable trust capital reserve and the continuation of those stuff. If we have any other capital items, or want to build an addition, or-
Okay, so that's not, that's not what I was thinking. We have a plan that to, or this plan that we have-
A facilities maintenance plan.
Facilities maintenance.
Yeah, and that is, in a state where the facilities committee, which generally has been the core of that, meets the, so probably get together and, you know, this fall, and kind of see where we are, that probably becomes part of a budgeting plan, either in terms of warrant article development, or, or, you know, things we might want to put in the regular operating budget proposal, depending on what it is. So that needs to get to, that may need to meet in the fall, or-
What I'd like to see is that when that facilities maintenance plan gets established and all the board members get a copy of it, and then, maybe two at a time, actually tour transportation. Here is the schedule. Was there any problem, Cam, that you know of? I haven't heard anything.
We attempted to set Transfinders up this year, but because of the changes in the addresses in Hennecker, we couldn't use it because the addresses that we put in, the new ones, were not recognized. So what you're looking at are exactly the same addresses as last year. And until we can get a new map from Transfinders, they're waiting for whoever supplies them with maps to update it with the new addresses that Hennecker hasn't. And then, what I could be able to do is that this software. So those are essentially the same addresses that you had last year.
Thank you very much, Cam.
Welcome.
Very busy, busy summer.
Oh, my gosh. We have had a full parking lot all summer. Thirty-seven kids in each one.
That's terrific.
Twenty-four going in.
Wow.
Four students.
Now, math camp is voluntary?
Yep.
And reading buddies is voluntary?
Yeah.
And what grade, the, the, we span there?
Reading buddies is kindergarten through seventh.
Hence, the buddies, older kids reading to younger kids and younger kids reading to older kids. Teachers doing rate allowance three mornings a week. And then math camp is fifth, sixth, seventh grade, the upper level. It's a view, Cheryl Roberts, who was down there today, maybe turning out calculations of dividing fractions and keep them near the track of who had the best. I think it'd be nice in the next month or so to just give a call, the board to give a call, just introduce themselves to Cheryl, our new, Kate Paul. Right. That's where Cheryl should get some help.
We are staffing. I think we have some things up here for your approval later on. I just recently sent a nomination up to the SAU for a special, one of our special educator. We are still lacking six through eighth grade tech and science teacher. We have interviewed five or six people already for that position. I think we interviewed eight for special educator before we settled on somebody. We haven't come up with anybody who either has the qualifications, is in the process of getting them, and would be a good fit for us. I don't pretend anybody applied who's fully certified. We did have one person, we offered the position to, they were happy to take it, hoping to relocate to this area and then, coming from out of state, took a look at our property taxes in Hennecker and Ware, and said, "I'd love to work here," just a way to report to relocate, pay those split of property taxes. On a relatively beginning-
Yeah, you should tell them that we used to have teachers that would live with different families for one month.
That's right.
And we're happy to do that.
Could we get some families to volunteer to take in the teachers, feed them?
Yeah.
I am contemplating, I'll just share this with you, making that position to half-time positions, one for tech and one for science. I have two people in the works who I know they haven't found positions yet, but I think they would work for us split. They won't work for me as one person, and I don't know if they settle and take a half-time position.
And the reason for that is that the two, the two things are somewhat divergent, is that not correct?
Right, and the span of grade level, sixth and eighth, sixth grade, you could put a sixth grade science teacher in with an elementary certification. You don't need highly qualified in science, but you can't take someone who's just highly qualified in science. That doesn't make you eligible for an alternative process for an elementary ed certification because that is not a critical year. So, there's a conflict.
What is, Richard, I thought she was a science teacher?
She's a science teacher. Yeah, she's doing seventh and eighth grade. Both seventh and eighth, but there is a room in their schedule to do sixth, so. And the sixth graders really need science, huh?
Yeah, they do. Thought about making it a straight science teacher and doing more science in eighth grade, in the tech ed arena, and not doing the tech ed, but making it science, physical science. That's another possibility, but we're getting close to the beginning of the year.
Now, the tech ed that you're talking about is what we used to call woodshop, right?
Well, it's what we used to call industrial arts. There's very little woodshop left to it. There's a lot of engineering kind of stuff.
I've seen the trusses and other things that they built. And that's-
Power, energy, transportation is a big piece of the curriculum.
But different enough, straight, straight science.
Right. I do have an engineer who's qualified for the position, but she'd be perfect for the comprehensive tech ed. And she does have, can do an alt process for science or tech ed, but not the elementary ed. We might be able to get away with it, but I'm not sure she's suited to do sixth grade science either. That would be great. So just so that you know, that was a little wiggly. It's not, it's not real firm. Does anybody have any questions about the principals' report? That was a lot of work, especially the professional development. That is terrific. Those workshops went well?
Oh, yeah, they're, they're still going, yeah. We've got people going.
This was the entire staff, that, all the teaching staff attended these workshops?
No, these are people who requested to go or we asked to go and who are going. We put numbers on all of these things for you. We have five people going to respond to classroom four to a language course at Pittsburgh State. We have four or five going with foundations, listening, reading. Everybody did designing essential outcomes and common assessments. Excellent. Six traits, I think we have about three or four, I'm sorry, everyday math, three or four people going. Everybody else has been trained. And we're going to contact our new people, they will be going to bases, and they've already been told they're going to get a position, if they haven't already been trained. Six traits is a number of people who took the initiative and went on their own. I didn't even turn it forward, et cetera. And we took a team to the Professional Learning Community Institute in Boston, and they are all fired up now. We're not going to keep up with them. They're ready for them at the beginning of the year, but that's very exciting.
August the 22nd, there's that bus driver breakfast, which, Chris, you actually came to, thank you so much, last year. This year, it's actually at Hennecker. And it's at eight o'clock. And this will be the second year, I believe, that we have all the bus drivers from Boston Trucking come to a breakfast. And it's just a meet and greet, and it's a discussion about any issues or problems that they're seeing, any issues or problems that we're seeing.
Now, this is what, time again and place?
It's August 22nd. It's here at Hennecker Community School, it starts at eight o'clock. You're all more than welcome to come to get these.
Do you know what day?
It's a Wednesday.
Probably wouldn't be appropriate time to go and say, please don't drive through the intersection with certain town at forty miles an hour.
Well, actually, it might be.
That'd be a really good time. How would I find your bus driver and say, "I'm not being fine"?
No, it says it on the list.
It might be. I think if there are concerns that, you know, there's some conduct that's going on that we're not appreciative of, it's a good time to start addressing.
Empty school buses do tool along, I find.
Do what?
They tool along. On Rush Road, coming back from dumping the load, there's everyone at home.
How do we get home? The last road.
Tooling along at the dumping the load, Jim. In my, my observations, they tool along a little too quickly when they're full.
Yeah, that's a worry.
And you already have the, the Council of the Manifesto, those are ready for signature and, and unless you have some questions, Jim is going to do those updates and, these are just attachments.
What's coming down is just a little quick spreadsheet.
Yep. That's what our stewardess, that's all the top. Sorry, Jim.
No problem. Christine asked me, after we got notification from the State Department of Education on the 2007, 2008 adequate education amount, and there was a splash that went in the newspaper that said, "Communities are losing, communities are losing from what they were."
Right, right.
And, you know, as I, as I reminded, I think, all of you, that we built the budget on what we received in '06, '07, not on what the Department of Education had projected based on the old law back in November, because the amounts that were being distributed were considered were lower for a number of communities based on that November law, November report from, but in, in actuality, is what's going around. Hennecker is going to gain a little bit in the adequate ed numbers, kindergarten through grade twelve. It actually is going to lose a little bit from what we received in '06, '07, going to lose thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and five dollars on the, in the Hennecker School District side, and that's pretty much because of declining enrollments. But the first part of the formula talks about, talks about a per pupil part of that calculation. But it is gaining at the high school end, the Hennecker side of the John Stark District is increasing over the, over what we budgeted at two hundred and seventy-seven thousand one ninety-one. So overall, Hennecker K to twelve, we'll see an additional two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, almost two hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is something like sixty-some odd cents on the tax rate, probably.
Of course, that's going to be, may well be offset by the increases in retirement and the other things, right?
Well, it'll be increased by the vote that was passed for the budget itself, and there were some increases there in the, in the budget in the fact that the collective bargaining agreement for one year was approved. So, you know, we'll see some, the next discussion we'll be talking about is the, the year-end results for '06, '07, which then also returns money to reduce taxes as we go to a certain tax rate this fall. I don't think we'll be flat on the tax rate, but we'll come pretty close to it. It's going to depend on how much the net assessed valuation of the town really grew. We predicted that one percent growth, and we did the budget, so we'll see at that. But I just wanted to sort of hand that out, there's, there's a number of parts of the adequate education law that indeed I think are going to change in the future as well, but this is the same formula. By the way, this is the amount we're going to get for both, for each year of the biennial. So as we build the '09, '08, or '09 budget, this is the number we'll get as well. But there's, you know, there are components of that law that talk on, let me get past the summary here. They call local equalization component, it's very good, and it's got the packages that people want. There's a targeted component of that whole adequate ed law, there's that, it goes on and on. I'm hoping it becomes more simple when they define, now that they've defined adequacy in the state legislation, now they're going to define how to pay for it. I'm hoping it becomes a more simple formula, because-
I hear they're going to pay for all special ed.
That would be one. I'd like to go back to the old special ed area. We'll pay up to two times the state average tuition, and then the rest goes to health and human services at the state. I don't think they'll-
But it would simplify things, wouldn't it?
It would. Okay, unless there are questions.
Okay, so, we've done your manifesto, you guys, and now we're going to do personnel?
No, Jen is going to ask you for your signature on that daily.
The MS twenty-five?
And no.
Yeah, let's see, we can talk about that a little bit. Let's talk first about, I'll pass out the one-page spreadsheet. We ended the year for '06, '07, as you all know, at June 30th, and we ended with a pretty healthy fund balance, as we've been talking about prior board meetings right along, both in terms of surpluses on the revenue side and being under budget on the expenditure side in, in regular education and in, in special education. We did, as you know, several projects in the buildings and grounds area that were voted on at the end of the year, and you can see those reflected. But as we quickly go down through the one-page spreadsheet of, this is just the general fund, we ended up with one hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars in revenues that were higher than when we set the tax rate. And they're predominantly, as you can see, they're in three areas. We, we, we're much higher in our Medicaid area, and when we set the tax rate, I generally set that fairly conservatively, because a lot of times, students that might be Medicaid eligible one year, the next year, and so you, you want to be pretty careful with that. You know, sort of the bad news of having Medicaid, high Medicaid revenues is that you also have high Medicaid expenditures, and Medicaid reimburses it fifty percent of the established rate for occupational therapies or, or health services and that sort of thing. But we did enjoy more revenue than we budgeted for there, and that was one area. The other one was in the area of tuitions. The board accepted tuition students in. That wasn't known when we set the tax rate, and so obviously we had incomes there. Earnings on investment is one that I think probably in future budgets, as I build it, that now that we're getting more of the adequate ed money coming into the school district coffers earlier on, as opposed to the old day, where ninety percent plus came from local town taxes, and we played, you know, ball with the town board of selectmen and the town treasurer, and only took what we needed to meet current obligations of payroll and accounts payable, and let the town invest tax dollars. Now we're getting a bigger part of the pie earlier directly into the school, and so we have investment policies, and we just renegotiated our rollover reinvestments with TD Bank North, and we're seeing more investment income. And I think in future budgets, I'll be a little bit more liberal in estimating interest income as we set the tax rate. The other, the other, the other local revenue dividends and so forth, the fourteen thousand dollars are a bit extraordinary, as you can see, we don't really budget anything there because generally, that's really just a line item, that if somebody, if a prior year refund comes from a vendor where the product didn't work and they took it back and they repaid you after you paid it, you would, you know, there's no, it becomes just surplus revenue, goes in as miscellaneous revenue. That fourteen thousand dollars predominantly came from that, plus about seven thousand dollars of that is coming from our E-rate funding. As you know, on your, on your local telephone bill, you pay a tax into the, to the universal schools and libraries, affiliations, and that's a tax that's been put on every, every telephone system in the United States to- in the United States to bring schools and libraries up to the Internet age. And so it reimburses us based on our percentage of free and reused for, even for what they call POTS, planal telephone service. So we get both revenue in, and about seven thousand of it is there. We also, sometimes that E-rate discount goes directly to TDS Telephone and gets produced off of our bill there, so our telephone bill goes down. Overall, Hennecker gets about sixteen thousand dollars in E-rate funding off of our telephone service, our Internet connection services, and that sort of thing. So that's that. The other about, just over four thousand dollars, all that fourteen thousand dollar line item in revenue was the reimbursement from PSNH for the relamping of the gymnasium for those high-efficiency lamps. They have a rebate program for introducing those, and that was, we got that checked in from PSNH, and again, it was after we had done the project, so it becomes surplus revenue.
How much for that?
From just over four thousand dollars from PSNH.
So do you recommend that when we build a budget next year, we should add some money under local revenues that were created in another line that says E?
Yeah, I could. I probably should, I probably could add some. You never know whether they're going to actually discount the bill, and so instead of getting...
So you don't know where it's coming from? If it's going to be a discount or if it's actually a cash?
Yeah, that's why I've always never, yeah. And spend generally, you know, six or seven thousand dollars on a five-million-dollar budget is not really a big tax impact, really, so.
While we're on the revenue side, we've been assessing impact, school impact fees on the planning board now for some time. Where in this will, when those things start flowing as they pull the building permits through?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because I have been approached, and I want to ask you. We talked about using the school impact fee as we build the revenues for '07, '08, as we set the tax rate. And if you're still interested in doing that, I'll continue that discussion with the selectmen to use that, which I think we should, we're eligible for it.
The selectmen are under, I think, under the statute obliged to move that money through the system to the schools as it's assessed.
Yeah, I think that'll show up, actually, under that other local column. It's not a tax assessment.
I think we should be using it, because we've got X number of years.
Yes.
And then it goes back.
Yes, you're absolutely right. Yeah, yeah. But I'm going to pursue that, as I do what's known as the MS twenty-four that goes in to the Department of Revenue that sets the tax rate after the sale. I'll continue that.
Are you following this? Are you following this?
Yeah, certain subdivisions have been assessed, school impact fees, and that includes the expansion of school facility pay for the past bonds. I think we should collect it, so. As we've talked about in the past reconciliations, we've been saving money in salaries and changing on health insurance in our regular instructional programs. We had anticipated a significant handicapped student being out of district. He stayed in district with a lot of supports, but that saved us a lot of transportation costs and tuition costs, which anticipated he'd be out residential. So that saved us this year. Again, we built the budget a little differently next year, so I don't think you'll duplicate those kind of things next year. The instructional support services that are under budget, and that's a little bit of a change from the last reconciliation, is we had enough grant money to use our grant money for staff training, but we didn't have to use all of our budget money, local budget money, and that got reflected there a little bit.
That's not something we'll carry forward.
No, that'll go to, that'll go to fund balance, and we'll go to reduce the tax rate, and then you'll live with next year's budget.
But when you build next year's budget, you can't necessarily assume that that grant money's going to be there, right?
Exactly, yeah. The Office of the Principal is a little bit over budget. Some of that is the decision to pay staff development for the assistant principal, as well as continue her education for that. Buildings and grounds, as you know, are over budget. Remember, there were projects that we had talked about before. And pupil transportation, although we saved some in some of the special ed, our transportation for special education was over budget. And in addition, the fuel surcharges, our busing contracts are based on a dollar a gallon for fuel, so in late June, I get the final bill from the fuel cost above a dollar a gallon. And we did that deliberately so that we could keep the per-day busing cost down as low as we can, and the school district takes the risk of where price fluctuations for diesel fuel are. And the reason I did that is because the bus contract's going into its third year of five, I think. And we did that is that because otherwise, these bus contractors are going to cover their debt and hedge it, and they'll build it into it. And I think you're better off just paying the dollar difference and knowing that, saying, I just want a cost for the driver, the bus, the insurance, the maintenance cost, and fuel at a baseline dollar.
So it does mean that we've got to provide for that in the budget.
Exactly.
And we know about what that's going to be.
Yes, right, right. Like, we have to predict oil, we have to predict certainly the overage. The good news, of course, is that school districts, because the government bodies don't pay state or federal taxes on diesel fuel, so it's before fuel. That's kind of the general fund. What I did is I made three copies that need original signatures of what's known as the DOE, Department of Education, twenty-five, which is the annual report. The board chair has to sign in the penalties of perjury that provides the accurate information to the best of her knowledge, his knowledge.
Well, there you go. The best of my knowledge.
So, yeah, there you go. And there is also what's known as the MS twenty-five, our municipal services form twenty-five, school financial report, which is the Department of Revenue, more condensed version that they use as a part of setting the tax rate this coming fall. As I go around with that, I'm going to keep one, just because, and I'll send the other two around, and the three MS twenty-fives, and then I'll follow with the DOE twenty-five, because I want to show you a little bit, if you can just sort of share them, a little bit about the reports, and particularly talk a little bit about the food service fund.
Does everybody get this one? There's only three, but you need to...
I can send the full DOE twenty-five or MS twenty-fives to you electronically, if you want them all. I know in the past, I think Lisa's asked for them.
Do we want to, we don't have to sign any of this, though, just Lisa?
No, all of them. Yeah, that requires a majority board's signatures.
All three? You have seventy-five, three.
Yes, yes. And there should be three financial reports and three DOE collections.
Oh, and you have one.
And I have one coming down the... On the first page, if you've just had a chance to sort of look at, if you've sort of turned to page one of that, when you see it, you'll see, you'll see five different columns of different funds. And as you know, school districts have financial reports by fund, by fund balance, it's fund accounting. The first column is the general fund, and the second column describes there's a food service fund, then it's all the special revenue funds, which essentially are your federal projects funds. There's a column for capital projects, which we don't have a capital projects fund at this time, and there are trust and agency funds, which are your expendable trust, capital reserve funds. The first, down at the bottom of that, you'll see under line thirty, the fund balances. And as you can see in that red in the food service fund, we're carrying a negative fund balance in the food service of sixteen thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and five cents. And that is a trend that's gone the wrong way. I want to take you from there to page nineteen, I think it is. If I remember correctly. Yes, nineteen. And page nineteen is essentially a statement of the analysis of change in fund balance from one year to the other. And as you can see, last year, when we ended the year, the general fund had a fund balance that went back to reduced taxation of two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-seven-eleven. This year, it has, I shouldn't say back to reduced taxation, had a fund balance to either fund appropriations, which we did, by funding our expendable trust, and/or the back to reduced taxation. This year, the general fund has two-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand dollars to go to its funding expendable trust or back to reduced taxation. But the second column over, where you see the red, we began the year with a hot lunch fund, seven thousand five dollars in the red, and we knew we were beginning some projects. And as you recall, Don Gabe said, "This may cost us, and we may end up having to subsidize our hot lunch program." And you can see there in that food service fund on page nineteen, we took in one-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-thirty-two dollars in revenues, student sales, free and reduced milk back in the state, free and reduced lunches. We spent one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars in salaries, food, milk, repairs, so forth. That does not include the new cash register system, which I charged to the principal's office as administrative services. Now, if that equipment had been actually charged to the food service program, it would have been ten thousand dollars there. But that's a, that's a kind of a capital item, it's not an operational kind of thing within the hot lunch program. But nevertheless, we lost another, you know, nine thousand dollars in the hot lunch program. Now, some of this, I think, is, as Pam, I talked earlier this week, Pam left me, right?
You're on your own.
Yeah, exactly. We increased the rates for hot lunches earlier, a little sort of, and that we hopefully take care of some of the issues. But nevertheless, the labor, the food service workers are part of the sports staff labor union, and they want to get raises, so their salaries and benefits will be increased next year a little bit. So we're going to have to watch this area, and I think in building the '08, '09 budget, we'll need to make an appropriation of tax money towards supporting the hot lunch program. I think we're at that point that if we want to run the kind of quality of hot lunch program we're running, we take a certain amount of labor, providing a certain quality of food product, and we don't have a student capacity. We can make a profit in this if we want to sell chips. If we can buy chips at twenty-five cents a bag and sell them at seventy-five, it doesn't make any labor to put them on a shelf.
So you're telling me that lunch programs are supposed to pay Marty's salary and all the workers' salaries and expenses?
Yes, yes. All your hot lunch workers, Marty's salaries and benefits, all the taxes for that, all the food purchases, all the utility, the propane to run the stove, is in the food service fund.
And you mentioned repairs as well?
Repairs to the hot lunch program, for visa breaks.
So what's happening with that? I mean, will it just...
Well, it'll sit as a fund balance. I'll get a letter from the Commission of Education, Christine, actually, will, which will go to me, and say, "You need to respond, how is the district handling its continuing negative fund balance in your food service operation?" I'll respond by saying, "We've addressed it by recent prices, we'll constantly monitor expenses, and indeed, as we prepare the budget for '08, '09, we may indeed need to prepare an appropriation from taxes for that, or we need to modify the program." That's, I mean, those will become the board discussions around the food service. I did want to show you that hot lunch is an issue in the district. The rest of the district's funds are in excellent shape. And I can go through all of the various line items.
And I think we're all really pleased with the food service.
One more.
And so are we not going to transfer? There's no way to transfer any?
There isn't at this point, because I don't have...
And there's no real necessity to...
I don't like that.
We all sign this one? We have to sign? We sign all of them?
Yeah, each needs to sign all of them. Teresa, as board chair, needs to sign in the penalties of perjury line on both sides.
Or you can sign...
The superintendent gets to go with you.
But that gets one. That's good. We can read books and talk.
Okay.
We'll talk. Okay, well, thank you. I think we just have to let the food service know that we're monitoring it, but we don't see any...
Pam will talk, and she's...
They know that we don't, think they're doing a bad job.
One of the things I think that will help is last year is that we had that cash register that didn't work so much that we didn't really get a sense of how we make it. Marty wasn't able to get a really good grasp, you know, is it the salad bar that's making us the money and we're losing on other things? Or is it the price of their, the adult meal that's costing? I think it's, I think our adult meals are the lucky price.
Yes, I am very impressed with this. I guess you're going to check it out.
Can I ask a question? Does anybody here recall what the amount was on the, it's actually the wrong word, but the deputy lunch program, what the accounts receivable were on non-payment?
How does, did money come in?
A couple thousand.
I'm sorry?
It was around two thousand dollars when Pam reported it to the board. Money has come in.
Collected on some of it.
But Pam did say that she's sending out in the mail things about the lunch program and that contract and stuff, how it's a debit account. Should we have to make a motion to accept this manifest?
No.
Okay.
Or actually, we need signature.
Okay. So we're sending back two-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars, and what's, what kind of impact, tax impact is there?
Oh, you're just under four hundred thousand on an SS valuation, three ninety, a couple million of that projection.
Sixty-two cents.
Yeah, you got it all right, yeah.
No, I'm, it's a guess.
Probably about right, yeah. If I use three hundred and ninety-one dollars, sixty-eight point seven eight cents.
Yes.
Sixty-nine cents.
All right, so we turn that back and...
We'll have a little higher revenue on adequate, well, actually, the elementary school won't, but overall, Hennecker K-12 will have a little higher adequate head money. Stark doesn't have a fund balance, either, so I can't... They have some, not as much.
Yeah, and where do we stand on this?
Yeah, I kind of think what we ended up with tax impact for the budget was eighty-one cents. I'm trying to go back to March here.
That didn't include what they added. That's right.
I can't remember. Eighty-one cents included the collective bargaining agreement.
I don't know. Well, we, we made the, we made the changes.
Yeah.
You know what? I think we were at sixty-eight cents.
For the budget itself. With the collective bargaining.
Before the collective bargaining.
Before the collective bargaining. Then you had, then you had the floor action, which bumped up the budget a little bit, and you have the CBA article.
That's good.
Do you have it? Yeah.
And where was it? Let's see, the general fund was, let's see, it was three in the budget, which is forty-four cents, forty-five cents. And then, right around, we got to the bargaining.
It was sixty-eight cents with the collective bargaining, all time low.
Okay. I think you maybe had Stark.
What was the total budget? Final budget, including everything?
Six million.
Six million, and we sent back a quarter of a million? So whatever, you know...
Oh, this year's total budget, yeah? The general fund was five million eight sixty-four.
Thirty-nine cents, and that's what? Forty-four, twelve.
So five million, and we turned back a quarter of a million? So we should be able to scale?
It was six million one oh eight.
The '07, '08?
The one we're in now. It's the one we added money back into. We, we, those people?
We, yeah.
That would be...
Yeah, this is the '07, '08 budget, yeah.
So you know that we had thirty-nine cents for teachers, forty-four cents.
They're all pretty good, too.
Yeah. And so it went up a little more than that from those people. Not much.
Yeah, twenty-seven cents. Twenty thousand.
So, moving right along. So it's less than what we...
And we're back up to the middle of the railroad.
So the schools are going to level off the tax rate, is right? How's John Stark?
They ended up with mostly surplus revenue, not a lot on the appropriations side. They used almost all their appropriations.
Okay. So they're talking about... Valious. She's a community teacher for grade two, fourth, second grade teacher. I'd like to nominate those.
Leah Legrand was nominated last time.
She was?
We did not get her sheet the last time, because we didn't have it, so I put it in the package just so you would have it.
So we're nominating the other three. And Donna Boka, we did last year, we did all...
We already.
It's like just Leah Bonapont, Ben Murn, and that's who really like to... Second name?
Aye.
Unanimous. And do we accept the resignation of Annie Wood? Do we have a motion?
Regretfully. I think a motion would accept her resignation.
You think we should let her know?
Regretfully.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously regretfully.
Yes, it's a big loss.
Excellent. On the memorandum of understanding, it's simply to say, have you had a chance to follow up on the memorandum?
Yes, I have. I have materials on it.
Wow.
Three documents included. The top copy is the memo of understanding as it existed two months ago. The second one is a draft revision. And the third one is a copy of RSA 193D, which is the statute that requires the memorandum of understanding. I had some concerns that I thought were more serious than they turned out to be. And I ended, ended up making a few minor recommended changes, and that is with respect to mandatory reportable acts. Which appear on page, page two of either the old or the proposed draft new. If you look at the original, old, you'll see at subparagraph E, it used to say arson, burglary, robbery, and theft of more than $50. Upon reviewing the statute, we're required to report any and all theft by statute. We can't limit it to $50. It's a statutory mandate. It may seem nonsensical to require that we must report in writing any theft, but the statute requires that we do. So I've eliminated in the proposed draft that more than $50. Also, if you look at subsection G, where it said first and second degree assaults, again, by statute, we are required to report all assaults, whether they're first, second, or otherwise. So you'll see in the proposed draft, I inserted a new paragraph, which is H, which includes simple assault. And then what used to be H becomes I, et cetera. So I added simple assault in the new draft. Those are the only two substantive changes on that page. If you go to the last page, you'll see in the original, at paragraph 2D, has a discretionary report item that said theft of property worth, worth less than $50. Because the statute requires that we report all, and I included or eliminated the $50 threshold on mandatory, I simply eliminated that paragraph from the proposed draft. I then started to make a couple of word changes and realized that really wasn't, to the extent I had a mandate, I don't think I was mandated to make word changes. But I did change the preface or paragraph somewhere. And I think my draft actually makes sense, whereas some of the language in the first paragraph of the original memo was a bit of a non sequitur. It doesn't change the memorandum of understanding, but simply words it a little bit differently. Oh, I'm sorry, there's one other. That's it, those are the only changes. I met with Chief Russell and discussed my concerns. He said he was fine with me making any proposed changes. He forwarded to me in WPD, the original, because we didn't have it, but the police department did. I have not gone back and met with him on these proposed changes, but based on the conversation I had with him, I can't imagine that he's going to have any objections to it. So I think that the draft as it's written should be acceptable to the police department, if it's acceptable to the school board. If not, I'm happy to come back and look at making any other changes, and perhaps we should. What actions now are required? By statute, you have to report, you have to report any act of theft, destruction, or violence. And then the statute defines acts of theft, destruction, or violence, and those are what are enumerated on page two in the mandatory reportable acts. All the rest of it, the discretionary reporting was, it isn't required by statute at all. And I reviewed a number of other memorandum of understanding between other police departments and other towns, and a number of them that I looked at don't have any discretionary reporting. And I think it's a credit to Tim Evans and Tim Russell that they were able to agree on discretionary reports in both directions. Nor does the statute require that the police department agree to do anything. So I think it was good that the police department agrees, although they're minimal, that they would provide information to the school with respect to certain activities that they were involved in. I don't know that the school has less than a, I don't know that the relationship between the school is less than what it should be with the police department. But I've heard some people on the outside say that they think that the police department and the school don't get along as well as they should.
In the high school?
I think this, I'm sorry?
Oh, in the high school?
I've heard particular comments with respect to the head of community school and the police department feeling that it was above the school and didn't need to allow the school, you know, what was going on, and didn't need to communicate with the school. That's not the sense that I get from reviewing this, and it's not the sense that I get from sitting down with Chief Russell and Don Melber. It hasn't been my sense with Chief Russell in the, the number of years that I've known him as the chief here. But I think, generally speaking, this memorandum of understanding sets forth a better relationship between our school and our police department than a lot of others that I've seen. We could trim it down, we could take things out that don't need to be there, but I don't think it hurts, and I think it helps to, to put on paper the fact that we, we do have a good working relationship, and I think it'll help us in the future. There's some language that concerned me a little bit in the original, which is, in the second full paragraph, it starts this memorandum of understanding. And I think I'd like your guidance on whether or not we should change this. I'm not sure why the parenthetical is in there at all, which says it's noteworthy to remind the community that 193D includes all students enrolled in the school. It's almost as if that was a note during the development process that wasn't taken out. But it serves no purpose to be there. The following sentence, I think, is written quite poorly. Furthermore, this memorandum may be circumvented by either the school administration or the PD in any situation of circumstances, emergency. I started to change that verbiage and then put it back, so it's in the draft as it is in the original. I don't think that language should stay like that. I don't think the parenthetical should be stricken. And I think the sentence, if, if furthermore, this memo can be circumvented, should be written in a way that explains, notwithstanding the responsibilities that we agreed to with this memorandum, in the event there is a reasoned determination by the administration or the police department that there's an emergency situation, which could result in damage, significant damage to property or injury to someone's physical well-being, that there are, that the, the school representatives or the police department could work outside of this, in an emergency situation. I don't have proposed language before that, but I think that's what was intended originally. But I thought I was getting beyond what I was agreed to look at here, and I made that suggestion. I think, I think that your suggestion there is probably with this marriage, we should use, we should follow up on that if we're willing to do so. I'm, I'm happy to do it and circulate it on the draft. Because circumventing, you know... Connotes something that's... Yeah, and I don't, yeah, we really wouldn't look like that to be there anyway. But, but conditions and, and working outside the agreement, I mean, it doesn't mean that the police can't come and do something, or the school can't do something. It just says that this is, this is, describes how we will ordinarily work together. And I tried to think of an instance where you have to work outside of this, and none comes to light quickly.
I'd be curious to see what Pam had to say about this, because it might, she might be able to give you some instance, and then you'll be able to say, oh, well, yes, but we can cover that instance in a different way.
I don't like that paragraph.
Okay, so, yeah, let's just find out why she thinks that was a good idea to have in, in there for the Chief Russell. The other thing that I'd like to see in this is, in, it says a superintendent shall designate principal or assistant principal. The...
Where are you looking at?
Under the school police liaison. And then it says the chief of police designates, and he names names, which is okay with me. I mean, what we've done is name positions.
Yep.
So that regardless of who's here, we always know who it's going to be. I don't know if Murdo and French have positions within the school, so that, say, they leave, it's always the school name. So you might want to check with him and see if he's got, if he wants to designate a position rather than a name.
They do have a, a community position, and I think that's a, that's an appropriate thing.
So that way, we don't date this memorandum?
Yeah, I think, I think that's good. Concerning your, your objection to the parenthetical statement, since RSA 139, 193D is cited in the paragraph above, first off, I don't think we need to talk about that and why, why it should imply to some students and not others. It's not clear to me what that parenthetical statement is about. I would, I would be happy to see that go away.
I agree.
I do have a question, though, about page two. If I, if I read that, a lay reading of that would suggest that any playground brawl has to go to the police. If somebody hits a... You're absolutely right, and it's worse than that, Jeff, because somebody who lifts somebody's $3 pencil case constitutes a theft. But both of those, all assaults, simple assaults included, and thefts are required by statute to be... By statute. There's no, there's no discretion on part of the administration or anything else? There's no discretion contemplated in the statute.
But do they have to act on, do, do the police then have to?
No.
So it's just a report? It's not like that then their criminal charge is brought up against the child for lifting $3.
I mean, let's talk freely. I can't imagine that the school administration, with this memorandum, this memorandum of understanding or without it, would report in writing to the police department that his son, and I'll use him as an example, lifted somebody's pencil box out of their, you know, I think Karen Raymond would see to it that it never happened again, and that would be the end of it.
But this memorandum says we would.
It, it does say we, we, we will, or we shall, but we can't have the memorandum say anything other than what the statute requires be done.
First reading of agenda preparation and dissemination. Can you copy that?
In the back, for the past.
Please.
You've got your...
Oh, here it is, thank you. This is pretty much the way we do it anyway, but we don't have it in our book, and I thought it might be useful for us to have it because as boards shift and possible superintendent shifting, to have this delineated would keep the process going. So that's the reason why it's been brought forward. And basically, it's talking about open and transparent.
Do you have a specific thing in here that addresses proposed, attempted changes during the, or at the beginning of the meeting?
Items of business not on the agenda may be discussed and acted upon if a majority of the board agrees to consider them. The board, however, may not revise board policies or adopt new ones unless such action has been scheduled or unless there is an emergency. And that's, I think, by statute.
The reason that I'm raising that question is that the, the way the system works generally is the matters to be considered at the meeting are supposed to be noticed, so that people can choose to appear or not appear as things appear. One thing, to put something on the agenda and then say, "We're not going to do it tonight," so that people say, "Well, we'll, we'll add it, and we'll come back when it is been done." But for something just to appear on the agenda because we decided it was a good idea, I think it may put us in kind of hot water.
Yeah, but I don't think that this, I think we brought it, if we wanted to talk about something and act upon it and it wasn't on the meeting, there are occasions that it happens. They're very rare. Very rare. But when they do, it's because it's of a timely nature. So I don't think we want to write a policy that doesn't allow us to do it. But the majority of the board would need to be able to do it, to say, "Yeah, it's a good idea to do this." So if they're not in favor of creating an agenda, we would, we'd have to call a special meeting or something.
Are there any things other than this under law that we would be obliged to call a special meeting? Any budgetary items?
Well, there's certain things, there's certain things we cannot, like, we couldn't automatically take money out of a trust fund unless it had been...
Well, there are statutory things like that.
Yeah.
You know, like the, the use of expendable trust by statute requires separate public hearings and notification. So I think that's an example, maybe.
It's pretty difficult to abuse.
Do we need to, do we need to make, you know, you simply, you simply, the only restriction on this is that you can't revise policies. Obviously, there's some other things that we can't do as well.
But thereby statute. Like, I don't think that, we, we took this from the New Hampshire School Board Association. Is that right?
I'm sorry?
This BEDH is from, is from the... I mean, it basically would be acting on law. The addition I see is that he has the, part of his own responsibility as the board chair to make sure they look at the agenda. And I know that's implied by... Very first slide.
Where are you?
Right first slide. Superintendent, his preparation. Superintendent shall consult the board. The superintendent shall prepare all agendas for the meetings of the board. In doing so, the superintendent shall consult the board chair. That's what I hear. I know, but it just says the board. So you want the addition of the chair? Yeah, I just, because that's the way we do it. Yeah, that's the way we do it.
Well, it suggests that the board chair is not available, we can't, need...
Or designate. Like that. So what you're... In doing so, the superintendent shall consult the board chair or designate. So can we adopt this? Can I have a motion to adopt this, changes?
So will you?
First reading.
As first reading? Does I call it, David? Hi. Thank you. Okay, discussion?
Discussion. What are we doing? What's the significance of a first reading? Are we adopting it, or are we adopting it as a first reading?
I hope you're adopting it as a first reading. All policies are adopted over two readings.
Okay.
So, so this will go out again, this will be part of our minutes? So that if somebody reads this and says, "Hey, wait a minute, I just think you guys are wrong about this," we're not actually doing this, this policy yet. We have one more. And then once you have two readings, then it becomes policy.